So it's red when it's not on, and then it's really red when it's on. And as you can tell, it works. You don't have to do that. So sit back, relax. For them or for you?
So they kind of really like, I know you heard me.
We are recording. Okay, we are recording.
Okay. We're in the blooper section on the front. But it gets edited out before it goes to TV. Because we have to turn it on back there. Normally, we'll do a packed team of sideline. Yeah. We don't have any of this. We gotta get a way to do that better.
We're supposed to have a computer in here.
Oh, yeah.
We can turn it on here, but right now I got it on the other one.
Yes.
It works? I was picking you up back there. You don't need a microphone.
You don't need a microphone? You cooking dinner? Microwave? Did I hear a microwave?
I do for all my side. I see her back there.
That's okay. I can get you on the camera.
I have no pens in front of me. Do you know what? Actually. I got one. I got one.
Oh, they're in your little thing by right. We cut council.
Yellow.
That was in the invisible ink.
This is a council panel. This is from our retreat.
Look at this one. I have no idea where I got it. I picked it up at a meeting somewhere. I know I did, because I don't think we buy these.
Good evening. Mr. Planning Director.
Oh, look. Community Development Director.
Yes.
These are good pens.
We have one of each.
You'll like it.
Here we go.
Here we go. I have a pen, because I don't have any.
This is my paper. When I write, it's gonna be all lumped.
Hair's getting.
Oh.
I'm losing more of mine.
At least it's there.
There's a little tiny time delay, it seems.
There's no ball spot. Sometimes it shows.
Pretty soon, that won't be up on there.
What's that?
This is what's going on the tape. Not tape, but on the feed. Doesn't need to be here, because everyone here can see. But we have to play around.
Without heading your church for soon.
Jen is the one that knows how to do it. She'll be back when.
Well, I'm not really considering you replacing.
Until I see the message.
Next one's a lot of talk.
I'm the one that noticed the little stick to the web. And it starts out with me going, wow, wow, wow.
Someone wanted to know where to send this.
We sent that.
Any baptized Catholic man is eligible. Put it that way. In good standing, I'm sure.
I'm good with that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the February 11th, 2013 Washtugle City Council Workshop meeting.
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Plinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee. Councilmember Schumig.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. We do, Councilmember Greenlee had notified us a couple of weeks ago that he would not be present this evening. Welcome to our next new version of setup. New microphones, all that kind of good stuff. Just a piece of housekeeping. You do want to make sure that your microphone is lit up in order for it to be on.
Now it's on.
Now it's on.
They work very well.
They seem to work very, very well.
You don't have to. These are brand new, and they do a great job, so you can relax.
Hopefully. Hopefully. Anyone from the public that would like to comment, council, before we get started? Okay. Presentations. We've got a couple, three items this evening. Jeanette, you're up first.
Great, thank you. So I'm first up as the department head, giving a department update. So that's my goal tonight. So in terms of what we'll cover, I want to first of all give you an overview of the HR function and the specialty areas. I don't come to council too often, so I'm sure there's a lot that I do that you're not aware of. So I hope to give you an overview of that. Talk about my key partners and resources that I utilize. The mandatory areas that govern my function. And then end with talking about what I'm working on this year, the goals and projects. Okay, so moving into the first area in terms of the HR function and the specialty areas. This is probably the most difficult slide to read, but out of the presentation. But I'm not going to go through this entire slide. But what I wanted to do was portray the depth and breadth of the HR function. Obviously, it includes a vast array of specialty areas that I'm responsible for as a one-person shop for HR. And so let me just walk you through a couple of those areas. But certainly if you have questions on any of the other areas, you certainly feel free to ask. So let me talk about employment and screening. Kind of sequentially walking through that process. So the advertising that we need to do when we do have a vacancy. Screening those applications when they come in relative to the criteria that we're looking for. Interviewing the candidates. Ultimately selecting and maybe testing those candidates. Offer letters, preparing those. And going into the reference check and the background checks. The reference checking, calling previous employers and such. Criminal background checks are done on all applicants or potential hires. And credit checks are done on some individuals, depending on the position, particularly if it's a financial responsibility. And then the orientation, the onboarding, going over the benefits package and integrating the employees into the workforce. The other area I'll just touch on is labor and employee relations. Obviously, a big area for me, acting as the chief negotiator for our contract negotiations. Researching and preparing for those contract negotiations, looking at what our comparables are doing by way of example. Contract administration, making sure we know our contracts, what we can and cannot do with our three labor groups. And obviously, working closely with the managers on that contract administration interpretation. Grievances, we get from time to time, so handling those with the managers. Mediation and arbitration that we can go to. Doing investigations, obviously working through conflict resolution. And the whole corrective action process. And again, adhering to our collective bargaining agreements. Okay? Okay. So switching to the next topic that I wanted to go over with you is key partners and resources that I have. As you saw from the previous slide, I have a huge span of control there in terms of the different specialty areas. So I really rely. I really rely on some of my key partners. So I wanted to touch on, first of all, the Association of Washington Cities, AWC, that we're familiar with. The governance there is the Board of Trustees that have the fiduciary responsibility for AWC. Councilmember Greenlee is our representative from this area that sits on that board. And they receive recommendations and advice from the Benefits Advisory Committee, Eback. So the Eback is a group of about, I think, 15 individuals that are predominantly HR professionals across Washington State that give advice and recommendations into the Board of Trustees.
Just public HR?
Yes, 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 exactly. And under the umbrella of benefits, if you will, here. Obviously, our health and welfare plans that we have, medical, dental, vision, long-term disability, life insurance and such are managed by AWC. They also have a third-party administrator that handles our COBRA, Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, retiree insurance, and the wellness program. Another area that we utilize AWC for is the Drug and Alcohol Consortium. So this is our mandatory drug testing that we have to do under federal legislation. This is for our Class A CDL holders. So predominantly, most of our public works personnel are that hold a Class A CDL. They go through the random drug testing program. And they provide training, which is also important, training to our supervisors in terms of the whole testing process. Lastly, Workers' Comp Retro. This is another third-party administrator they utilize for workers' compensation. So handling the claims administration, if you will, for us, for workers' compensation. Okay? All right. Another key partner is the Washington Cities Insurance Authority, WCIA. I'm the representative, the delegate of the City of Washtugle to WCIA. Again, they have a governance, a governing board. And basically set the day-to-day direction for the executive committee of WCIA. So in terms of what they do for us, claims administration, act like an insurance adjuster, if you will. I send the claims directly into them if we have from our community, and they handle that claim to closure. Risk management surveys, they can do onsite reviews. They come to department meetings. We've utilized them for that. And do research and analysis for us. Legal consultations. I use this piece heavily. Obviously, again, being a smaller organization, unlike Vancouver, being a larger organization, I don't have an employment attorney to go to when I have issues that I'm working with and a sounding board. And so if I'm dealing on a particular issue, and I feel that it's something that may go south on us from a liability perspective, I get in contact with WCIA, and most of the time I'm assigned pre-defense. So I've got an attorney that I'm working with and giving me advice as we go through the process. And education and training is an area they've actually beefed up within WCIA because the feeling is that if we educate managers, supervisors, employees, then over time we'll reduce liability and the risk exposure. So a lot of training. You see those emails come through from me, I think, with the different training offerings that they have. Okay. I won't go into the detail on this one. I spoke to this at the end of last year. We're a member of the COG, Cowlets, Waukeaham County Council of Governments for the purpose of our Kaiser Plan now, and reaping some of the benefits of being part of that larger group. Okay, and then lastly, under this bucket, I just wanted to highlight each of the directors or members of different organizations aligned with their function and their career. I am actually a member of these two particular organizations, Society of Human Resource Management and Npower, the National Public Labor Relations Organization. And I put that out there again because as a generalist, not being an expert in all of those areas, these are great tools for me with minimal expense each year. And being a member of these two organizations, tools, templates, advice that I can go to, again, as another resource in keeping those costs down. Okay. All right, going into the next area, I wanted to talk about, David presented at the retreat, each of the different functions within the city and the notion of mandated areas, if you will, that impacts each of our different areas. I wanted to delve down a little bit deeper on that for you, so you can kind of appreciate, if you will, some of the mandates that certainly I have within human resources. So at a high level, I've got each one of those specialty areas. And you can see that each one of those areas, I've got federal and state mandates that I'm having to adhere to. You can see the Washtugle Municipal Code, collective bargaining agreements, and also personnel policies. So a variety of different areas, if you will, that mandate the function. Okay, let me, I just wanted to delve down. This is not meant to be all-inclusive, but it does give you a feel for the laws and regulations, if you will, that govern each one of these specialty areas. So starting off with employment screening and testing. On the federal side, we've got the Equal Employment Opportunity Laws, Title VII, Civil Rights Act, ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, Age Discrimination and Equal Pay Act, of some of the laws, if you will, under EEO that governs the whole staffing process. And then, of course, the Immigration Reform Act with the requirement to complete the I-9 form within the first three days of a hire. On the state side, credit checks, I mentioned, we do do those on occasion. I have to make sure that I adhere to that mandate. New hire reporting as we bring individuals onboard. And making sure that we're all compliant with their pre-employment inquiries that we may do through the interview process and/or an application form, making sure that we're not asking inappropriate questions, if you will, during that process. Okay, going into the benefits area. And after I put the slide together, there was one very important law that I overlooked. Maybe I'm in denial. And that's the Patient Protection and Affordability Act, Obamacare. So obviously, that's on the federal side. But that is a law that's obviously coming in with different aspects over the course of the next few years. The Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA. Summary plan descriptions, those have to be handed out to all new hires for the different plans that we provide within the city. COBRA upon termination, and military leave. On the state side for benefits, several here. Military leave of absence for public employees, for spouses, if they've got a spouse that's going out on military leave. Domestic violence. Oh, there we go, okay. Domestic violence, sexual assault, family care, Family Leave Act, shared leave. And obviously, the person left retirement plans under Washington State.
Jury duty? That's not a state mandate?
No.
What's the city's policy on that? Just out of curiosity.
Three days. Sorry, two weeks.
Two weeks?
Two weeks, yeah. I'm thinking bereavement.
Excuse me, what is shared leave?
Shared leave is in the case that, let's say, an employee has a serious medical condition, and they don't have sufficient sick leave in their banks. Then employees can donate vacation that converts into sick leave for them. Yeah. All right. Performance management and compensation. On the federal side, the Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA, governs minimum wage. Overtime, more than 40 hours in a work week, record-keeping, and also exemption status if employees are exempt from overtime or not exempt and are eligible for overtime. And also unemployment insurance, and certainly by way of extended benefits. Given certainly the economic climate that we've gone through, they've done quite a bit in that area. State unemployment insurance and also minimum wage. Okay? Training and development. So I alluded to this earlier, supervisor training for those that are working with employees going through the random drug testing indicators of probable drug use or probable alcohol use. And also, I've put under here the anti-harassment training. It's not mandated, but we do go through that, try and do that every other year for employees and managers, because obviously this is a huge exposure for us. We have a huge liability if one of our managers or supervisors are found certainly guilty in this area. And on the state side, the whistleblower and training around that. Okay, labor and employee relations, again, you see EEO, equal employment opportunity pop up again. HIPAA, privacy of employees, certainly their medical information and such. Anti-harassment, liability again for supervisors. On the state side, we've got rules and regs in terms of collective bargaining and what we have to bargain with our three labor groups. Protection from discrimination. This, on the state side, is much broader than at the federal level. So for example, individual families that have, employees that have families is governed on the state side, which doesn't include that at the federal level. Also, use of services, service dogs, if you will, for those that have a disability. Okay. Commissions. Let's see, did I go too far? Sorry, I got my slides out of order. Apologize for that. Okay, HR administration, required posters. Each year I refresh our posters at each of the different sites. And on the state side, a personnel file review. Each employee has legally to review their personnel file, at least on an annual basis. Obviously, I'm a lot more flexible than that. Confidential and separate medical file kept from their personnel file. And again, state-required posters as well. Okay, commissions. So I facilitate two commissions for the city. The Civil Service Commission, and they're regulated by the state, as well as our Washtugle Municipal Code. And then the Sari Commission I facilitate also. And again, that's governed at the state level, as well as our local code as well. Okay, risk management. I've talked about the federal drug and alcohol testing, Occupational Safety and Health Act administered by OSHA. And on the state side, workers' compensation, as well as citizen claims administration. Okay, that was a lot.
So you're in effect the risk manager?
I am, yeah, yeah. All right, so going into the last part of my presentation that I wanted to go over with you. And now I've given you kind of HR 101 and what I do and all that good stuff. Talk about what I'm working on for 2013. This is the first year, certainly since I've been here as a chief negotiator. We've got three collective bargaining agreements open this year. So that will be quite a tall order. Obviously, we did that by design to have the three contracts open at one time and working towards the goals of bringing fairness and equity amongst the three contracts, if you will, as it makes sense, because there's obviously some uniqueness to those three bargaining groups. I will be facilitating a benefits committee that actually gets kicked off tomorrow. The goal will be really to, I'll have actually all three bargaining groups at the table, as well as non-represented employees. I've got two members, if you will, from each of those groups. And we'll be hearing from experts in the field of benefits, if you will. But the goal was really to take it, because this is such a huge cost area for us. It's something that we want to take a look at in terms of possible redesign, more employee cost sharing. You name it. I mean, we're gonna put it all out there and see what we can do to curtail these costs that we've been experiencing year over year. Updating personnel policies. There's some inconsistencies within our policies and collective bargaining agreements. Department Head Manual is now a part of the personnel policy. So go through that with an eye of cleaning things up a little bit and making sure there's some consistency. As well, most likely, one policy that I will bring forward, it's a new policy for council this year, is a compensation policy. We don't have kind of that philosophy, if you will, around compensation in terms of who our market is and where we want to position ourselves in the marketplace relative to compensation, total compensation. So I will be embarking on that. Continue to earn the WellCity Award, as you know. That gives us a 2% discount on our premiums for our region's medical insurance. While the bar has been set relatively high since they've been offering that 2% reduction, it's going to be set even higher. Actually, for this year, and the premium we could award, or that 2% discount that we could get for next year. So I will be discussing that with the benefits committee as well. And what ideas can we put forward in terms of ensuring that we get that participation in the wellness program and continue to get that 2% reduction in our region's premiums. A project that I actually already started last year that I continue to work on and will be bringing it forward actually to the Civil Service Commission in March is an update of our civil service rules. So working on that. Establishing and measuring goals specifically for the HR function as a result of the strategic plan. So I'll have my piece of the pie there, if you will, under that. And lastly, assisting those that will be on this second phase of the strategic plan on leveraging our performance appraisal tool that we have, HRN, online. Okay. Big data dump.
Questions for Jeanette?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Just let it go.
Maybe offline.
Okay, moving to new business items coming forward, community development. Public hearing for the Porta Camas Washtugle Development Agreement.
Thank you, Sean. We, just a heads up that next week, on the 19th, you'll be setting a public hearing for sometime in March related to the development agreement. We, a little bit of difference on this one is that the, it won't be on the consent agenda. It'll be in new business, because it'll be after you guys have your discussion on meeting times for the upcoming meeting. So we'll know exactly what date we'll be setting that hearing on. So that's the update. And you'll just be setting the hearing next week for that. Steigerwald Commerce Center.
And Medical Marijuana Collective Gardens.
Yes, we will be having a hearing next Tuesday on... on the extension of, my recommendation to you is to extend the Medical Marijuana Collective Garden moratorium for an additional six months. And it's a little different. I met with the community development committee earlier today and brought them into the fold on that. But we did not have you, council, set a, have a meeting to set the hearing for that. We, there wasn't a state statute or a local code or your rules that says that we have to have a meeting to set the hearing for, for these. And so we have said it, it required us to have public notice. We did do that and, but we will be having the hearing next Tuesday to extend that moratorium. Our recommendation is to extend that moratorium.
With that, with action followed?
Yes, that will be, that is the hearing on next Tuesday.
In the resolution extending, I thought I read something about the initiative that passed last November.
Yeah.
Is that justification for, because you know, you cannot extend moratoriums forever.
Yep.
And it seems to me that's enough of a change that it would be reasonable to extend.
Yeah, we, we actually met, council member Lindsay and I met with the control board last week and before the forum, the open house forum that they had in Vancouver. And the, the indications that we really got from them was, I'm not going to quote them directly, but really was, don't open this door yet. They, the, the laws around medical marijuana will probably have to change with the implementation of Initiative 502.
Okay. They have a deadline under the initiative to come up with their own regulations, don't they?
Yes, for the first part of it will be, the first part of August, which is when this will actually expire. So that's the first phase of it. The, the three levels, the process, the production, processing, and retail over the course of a year, but the production is the first phase that will come out in August.
Okay, and then when are there, you know, when, when can we expect to see marijuana, legal marijuana sales, assuming the feds don't?
End of the year, December 2013.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Mitch? Okay, yes.
This is up, is this up on our website or can this be electronically distributed to our?
I will, I will provide a copy of the, the, the control board gave us a handout, kind of a fact sheet, if you will, on the initiative. I will provide a copy of that. I'll put it in the, in the drop box for everybody.
Thanks Mitch. Dave?
I wanted to thank Mitch for his hard work on this and for his coordination with the police on this issue and also to announce, because my, my colleague here is hiding her light under a bushel basket, that Joyce Lindsay was elected as the chairman of the Community Development Committee today unanimously.
Yes.
Well, not quite unanimously, she didn't vote for herself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Dave, meeting rules, procedures, meeting times?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, as you recall, at our planning session, you asked for staff to bring back proposed rules or change, proposed changes to your rules to accommodate a switch to a two-meeting, well, it's a four-meeting per month, but a two-times-per-month format, similarly to something you had considered late last year. Provided a little bit different direction around some of those details. So I will go over what is proposed. And in your packet in the drop box is an underlying strikeout version of the three sections of your rules that are important. My presentation will just highlight what those are and then based upon your feedback tonight, can make any adjustments as necessary and then they would be for your consideration next week. So the proposed meeting schedule, as I mentioned, is to go to a two-times-per-month context, meeting the second and fourth Mondays each month, except in November and December. And I'll get into those details, well, I will right now. In November and December, based on your direction at the planning session, we would meet for second, third, and fourth Mondays. We would have those teed up and scheduled. Please recall that the mayor has been granted the authority to cancel meetings. And so we can be adaptable and flexible with that with adequate notice if it turns out we don't need all of those. But this is really crunch time for year-end work, including the budget. And so your direction at the planning session was to make sure we had enough meetings during that timeframe. We would be looking at workshopping beginning at five and going to six-thirty-ish, taking a break so that we could have a snack or a light dinner. And then we would come into regular meeting at seven until that was finished. We will continue to meet like we will next week, in fact, on Tuesdays following a Monday holiday. It's just noted that there will be a couple of times that we'll have to make adjustments with the planning commission, but we are prepared to do that. And the idea would be to affect this transition next month. That we would jump into this schedule next month if you adopt changes to your rules next week. Another item, this would be different than what we had discussed last, or late last year, would be the introduction of a new section to your rules. And this was in response to Councilman Bogers' request that the council consider this. And there wasn't clear direction, if you would, at the planning session from the rest of the council, although I did notice a willingness and an interest to talk about this topic. It is in the draft that is in your drop box adding this in. But basically, what this would do is that three Saturdays at the end of the quarter, the end of the first quarter in March, the end of the second quarter in June, at the end of the third quarter in September, there would be a two-hour Saturday town hall style format council session, if you would. No specific date or time is in your rules so that we can be adaptable and flexible to where you would like to meet and exactly which Saturday in those months and exactly what time of day. We would provide notice, this provides the standard sort of hearing notice that we provide, which is ten days. And there's language in there as well that would allow the council to cancel one of these, which may be a redundant thing to say because I think you could suspend your rules at, at any time. Really, what I covered on the previous slide is almost identical to what we were discussing at the end of last year, except for the November and December multiple meetings that we would have. Otherwise, it's, it's really identical. What is different this time is this notion of having town hall meetings to add to the portfolio of how the council might engage with constituents. So open to any questions you have about this part of the proposal, the, the routine meetings. And then really looking for some guidance from the council on whether or not you want to advance this town hall notion or not in your packet next week.
Jennifer?
Yes, I have a question about attendance. Is it mandatory or will attendance be taken at the town hall meetings? What, what is the plan there?
My sense would be that it would be not a regular council meeting, but it would be a workshop-like-ish special sort of meeting. It wouldn't be a meeting where you take action. But because it would be prescribed in your rules, my sense would be that it'd be one of your meetings and it would fall under the same provisions as the others. You could certainly do something different than that, if you would like.
Well, I, here's what I had. I had in mind a mini-retreat, quarterly retreat. And you know, there ought to be, you know, I don't, I don't want to show up on a Saturday and have, have, you know, no, no one from the public, only a couple of people from the public show up. I just, it's kind of, you know, so I think there might be some public discussion on some topic that the administration or council members choose to bring up. But also, we could talk about anything the public wants to talk about. But we might take that opportunity for like a mini-retreat or a workshop or something like that to maybe have a theme for each retreat. That's kind of was my, was my thinking on it.
I wrote that same thing down here to make sure and have a topic for each one of them. Just to at least get it started.
At least one topic, yeah.
Get some things introduced.
Will we decide to have these ongoing based on attendance of the public? I mean, our, our annual meeting only had two?
Oh, we had more than that, didn't we?
Handful or something.
Handful, was there? A few people came and went.
Came and went.
I know, yeah.
I think we revisited the first of the year, 2014.
I'm certainly open to it. Of course, when we plan them, we got to look at calendars, holidays.
Well, as I understand the proposal, there's a preemptive scheduling in here at the end of the quarter, right?
The last month of a quarter, of the first three quarters. Now, that was just me trying to come up with a scheme for spacing meetings out.
I have some thoughts on that. One of the things, I, I think that we ought to have a, some public meeting on a Saturday when we can have the entire community, where it's more, it's possible for more members of the community to show up on the budget, once the budget's rolled out. I know November's a tough month. Although I don't, I don't know if we need to meet four times in November. I think three times would be, would be sufficient. Then, you know, taking out Thanksgiving week, maybe. And then just compensate for that by another retreat in November with, when the budget's presented. I would call it a retreat, but a town hall meeting on the budget.
Yep, you can certainly still have the conversation even if the budget isn't completely done. We don't have numbers nailed down, anything else. The idea and the flavor of what's in the budget is, is there already.
That's the most important thing we do. And I want to make sure we give the public the maximum amount of opportunity to talk to us about that.
I think, Jennifer, in answer to your question regarding attendance, I don't think it's something where it's up to the council whether you're mandated. The only thing that you're mandated to by state law is to the council meetings themselves, not to workshops, not to special meetings, not to any of it. Unless it's a special meeting that has action attached to it, then it becomes a council meeting as well. I would hope these would be a little bit more flexible, relaxed, town hall-ish. You know, we'd probably still take notes of what happened and as much as we can take notes of who, who were there and that type of stuff of, of the organization, but.
All right, one more question. Okay, staffing, what, what, I mean, will we have specific agendas and members of staff there and available to answer questions from council and from citizens? Or how will that work?
For the town halls?
Mm-hmm.
I would anticipate at the very least that I will be there. Based on the conversation, this notion that there'd be at least one topic that would be timely and relevant for that particular town hall meeting. If, if that needed a department head to be there for that, then I would make sure that that person is there. And we can be adaptable to see if, if the whole team needs to come like they do to the annual, the annual session or not. I mean, it's a, it's a council time. So we want to do everything we can to make sure that we're supportive and serving you while balancing that with, you know, those demands on, on the team. So you can count on me being there. And if we, if we need Rose's assistance, then, you know, we would have that staffing as well or someone to fill that role.
Well, we'd need definitely someone for minutes, minimum.
Yep.
So with, with addition of a, of a topic for the town halls, I would actually suggest that we go to three meetings in November and three meetings in December. Because I can't imagine us meeting Christmas unless there's a real catastrophe on the budget of some time. I can't imagine us meeting Christmas week, so I, we could, and if we have to, set a special meeting.
Set a special meeting.
And the same with Thanksgiving week.
Thanksgiving is the, oh, which Thursday is it? The third or the fourth?
It's always the fourth.
Fourth Thursday. So do you want to meet?
But sometimes the fourth Thursday won't be preceded by the fourth Monday, so.
Exactly. Well, this year, it is in the same week.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it right here.
Well, we would just meet, three meetings in November excluding Thanksgiving week.
So the Monday prior to Thanksgiving would be a non-meeting Monday, wherever that would lie. But the Monday following Thanksgiving potentially would be a meeting because it'd be a first, second, or fourth.
It's a fifth, it was the fifth.
If it's a fifth, we wouldn't.
Right.
It'd be, yes. And that will happen every few years. So for example, next year, it looks like Thanksgiving is the la, the last.
This year.
Or this year, that's right. Next Thanksgiving, the twenty-eighth would be the Thursday that is Thanksgiving. So the fourth Monday in November would be the non-meeting. And the first, second, and third would be the meetings. Again, unless we canceled, otherwise canceled because they were, weren't necessary. And then in December, I think it would be safe to just say first, second, and third. And that, it always stacks up that way. That's an easy change to make.
And I would think that if we had a crunch time, we might set a special meeting on a Wednesday night or something instead of meeting Christmas week.
So we're going to put it in writing then instead of November being?
Right, I'll make the updates.
You'll make that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Be nice to know that it's always going to be.
Are all the meetings in November and December council meetings?
The, the proposal actually has them be the tandem of workshop and council. And again, the mayor, in working with the council, could look at canceling the entire evening, the workshop and the regular meeting, or one or the other, depending upon how things are going with the budget or other topics. We could determine that, you know, this week we need the workshop, but we don't need action. You know, a week following. The idea behind it is to, instead of being locked into that second and fourth, that we are adaptable and flexible in November and December while providing as much certainty for the community as we can about what's regularly scheduled. So the notion would be, we will be meeting three times in November and three times in December unless otherwise canceled, which is the normal thing. And you always have to have at least one regular meeting. You do not have to have workshops at all. But you prescribe them, so you have to have them without canceling. And I think the other thing that I'm, I'm hearing is that other than the budget town hall, the, the, sort of the context for these Saturday meetings is really it's a workshop slash town hall because we will have a topic. So I'll work with the language around that.
As a practical matter, when would it be most meaningful to have a budget town hall? When would that normally be?
Either October or early November.
Yeah, my sense would be after the mayor's proposed budget is out, formally out, and has been out for a little bit. So that the folks that you're wanting to hear from in the community have had a chance to, to review that and potentially even have observed and participated in a workshop that we've had on it. So we can figure out what, what date that would be.
It seems to me that we're taking a system that is very predictable for our community and make it confusing. I mean, it's one of the things now, people know somebody is here every Monday evening. And then you start switching around or start changing. We don't have a very efficient way of letting the public know even now. And so predictability, I think, is something that our community has been able to depend upon. And this sounds like we, we may do this, we may do that, or we can change it, or we can't. How do people know when we're here?
Well, the rules will be very precise for ten months out of the year. We'll be here on second and fourth Mondays, always at five o'clock for a workshop and then for a meeting. Unless it's a holiday, then we're on the Tuesday. The rules will say that you will be here three times in November and it will say exactly what, you know, I'll have to look how to word that to meet the goal of not, of meeting every Monday except the Monday prior to Thanksgiving and not fifth Mondays. I'll find lingo that makes that. So that's, that's predictable.
It's predictable.
And then in December, it will be in the rules. And then in December, it will be in the rules, first, second, and third. So, November and December are different than the first ten months. That's absolutely true. Um, we will have to do the best we can to publicize that to folks. Um, the alternative would be to meet second and fourth in November and December as well, and then call special meetings as necessary. What, what this approach does is it says, let's put the meetings in the rules and then cancel if we don't need them. The result is the same, um, but how it's presented is different. The town hall concept that I put out, it doesn't have to be this way. It could be prescribed. The exact, you know, first, second, third, or fourth Saturday could be prescribed. I proposed for your consideration and your conversation about this, the notion that the month be prescribed for the town hall. Uh, but that the locations, you could maybe move around in the community potentially, um, and the exact time of day, uh, and the date. Because I think we'll, we'll learn as we go. We'll have that first one, and we might find that, you know, that time of day, that's not a great time of day on a Saturday. So, we wanna change the time. We'd have to come back and change our rules to do that. So, that is, that is, um, somewhat ambiguous for, for, I mean, indeed it is. That's for the conversation. It, to provide that flexibility so that we can try to best serve the community, it does not give them uh, something they can bank on for when that town hall meeting would be, uh, be the trade-off.
One of the things that I try and encourage people is to go into our website and sign up for the electronic newsletters and that type of stuff as well.
For the town hall, oh, or for the meeting? I mean, we're talking two different cities.
We are currently, and we have been for the last month, we send out the agendas and the meeting notices and all of that type of stuff to folks, so it would be very easy for us, and I think it would be helpful if, for some reason, we had any meeting that was being canceled, that it'd also go out on that system as well. And there may not even be much of anything in the email. It may just be in the subject line. Tonight's Muscule City Council meeting canceled. Just to catch attention, so... Either way, it's, yeah, and, you know, I get what you're saying as, as far as potentially confusing folks. Um, I think we do the same thing to some degree if we have specific nights though as well. But then we have more potential for putting in special meetings. Are they gonna know that we've got those special meetings? Are they gonna read them or any of that? So, it's kind of...
I like government being predictable for the community. We have a hard enough time getting people to be here and participate anyway, so... I mean, I, I, it's just a thought. I, if you make it confusing, if people show up and nothing's happening, that's, you know, or they come and the doors are locked, and all those things are a turnoff of our, and the perception of our accessibility. And so, I s- I don't.
When we canceled all of our December, but the first December, was, I don't know if there was ever a problem when people showed up and city hall was dark.
We don't know that, but we did have to re- have another meeting because we knew then that people were coming on the seventeenth of December. I mean, once we were forewarned of that, we had to.
Of course, that was a, the water.
Some of us, a lot of us could've been gone or out of town because we had anticipated no meetings in the month of December, so I think it's just not predictable, and I think when you're a government service of the community, predictability is important. That's just a thought.
Wasn't that meeting highly attended though because of the topic?
Sure was.
That's why I think like the town hall format on Saturdays would be great, because maybe it would be, maybe it would be something that they would be engaged in and, and show up.
I like the town hall concept a lot.
And speaking of water bills, I noticed there were some discounts online, so...
That was still, still went up though, but, um, you know, my thoughts, uh, you know, with my, in my, you know, long-term service on this council of seven and a half months, you know, I, one of the things I've observed is attendance is driven by issues more than.
Always.
And, um, eh, when people are, are here on an issue, they know, they, they, they bloody know when the, when the council meeting's gonna be, and, um, so I, I, you know, and the people that, there are people that, and I welcome both, both types. People that attend generally, you see here pretty much every Monday or nearly every Monday. You know, they're in tune enough that they're gonna be able to figure out that, you know, what our meeting schedule is. So, I, I don't really see this as a, as a, a big problem. And I think the advantage to it is now we've given people who might not be able to speak at six P M, come and talk to us at six P M, or go to the meetings, because they're commuting to Portland or somewhere else. And now they have two other opportunities. They can be here at five on a workshop, or they can be, come back at seven when they actually take action. So, they're, and then plus the, uh, plus the town hall. So, we're, we're taking one opportunity, giving them three different time slots for us, for them to come talk to us. So, I, I think this has pretty much all upside, in my view.
Other questions, discussion?
So, just very briefly, if I might, mayor, to summarize, so I make sure I, I, um, bring back next week for your action, the package that the council is requesting. First ten months, second and fourths, five to six thirty, seven until done for the workshops and the meetings. Meet on Tuesdays like we normally do if there's a holiday. Three Nov- uh, three Mondays in November. Those three in the first four, except the Monday prior to Thanksgiving, come up with the language for that. Three Mondays in December, specifically first, second, and third. Four town hall-type meetings during the year. Uh, the three that I proposed, uh, but I'll come up with lingo around a workshop in a town hall setting. Uh, and, and then one in November, uh, that we will call, uh, we'll identify the topic and the rule. It's, it's around the budget.
November, October, depending upon.
Whenever that right time is. Um, and so I'll leave the flexibility, but not preciseness in the, in the rules about that for the budget. And then, um, I think it would be appropriate, if it is the desire of the council, that these not be attendance mandatory for you, that we say so in the rules specifically so that we don't get into anything around, you know, unexcused absences and all that type of stuff. Was there consensus around that particular aspect as well?
I like that a lot.
Okay, I will make sure that.
Can, could, can I propose one tweak to this? We have our public comment at the beginning of the workshop.
And at the end.
In, in this, and I, I actually think it might be more productive after they've heard the public, after they've heard the workshop, to come in and comment on it. Uh, you know, one of the, one of the, uh, citizens made an email comment that it was a mistake to have these at five because people can't show up uh, and hear this at five. Well, that's true for a lot of people at six as well, and that's why I think the seven o'clock is, is an improvement. But, uh, I think the public participation would be more, um, meaningful, because they would've heard it too, the workshop interior too, if we had the, uh, public comment period after the workshop.
So, what the, what, what your rules currently say, and I'm not proposing to change it, um, for regular meetings, your order of agenda very precisely prescribes two comment opportunities, one at the start of the meeting, and then one at the end of the meeting. So, I think the one at the end of the meeting meets the purpose you just described. The one at the beginning of the meeting might more suit those that are coming to generally, uh, share something with the council, and then they, they can go, because they're not interested in the rest of the agenda. Um, for workshops, your rules do not prescribe any agenda at all, except to say that there will be two opportunities for the public to comment, one at the start and one at the end.
That would survive.
So, there will be, there will be, eh, eh, the proposal doesn't change those parts of your rules. So, at five, right out of the gate, as this evening, uh, public comment opportunity. Work session, public comment opportunity. Break, meeting, right after the, the preliminaries of the meeting, public comment opportunity, and then again at the end before council comments.
What if we chew up the, workshop chews up the whole time? Um, and we, we actually have to go at, you know, like we've talked about before, when we do our, our public, our actual public hearing business. And then our, we would have a, um, there'd be a public, there'd be an opportunity to speak after the end of that. Would there be, but people might not be able to stay for the workshop, the, after the workshop. So, what I would be concerned about is if we chew up the whole workshop clock. Do you understand my question?
Yeah, we likely wouldn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
In, in, certainly in this format where we've got basically an hour and a half's time to get through things, you might see me try and rein folks in a little bit more at times when we, okay, bring it back to the subject at hand and I thi- I think we've gotta preserve that time in there, even if we cut ourselves short for public comment, even if it's a short period of time. I like something you said about the, um, public comment at the first, simply because I think that the public comment should inform the workshop. And if it's first, then it does that. We get to hear from the public about what we're discussing. So, we have that in mind as we have our discussion. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Can I jump?
Uh, it was brought up, I think Sean, you mentioned that if we run out of time in our workshop and it's time for council meeting, we, what was it?
Recession.
Recession, pause. Uh, we recess, we do our city council meeting, and we can always go back into workshop. Whatever's needed.
That's correct.
So, just so we're all comfortable that we take as much time as we need.
Yeah, in those instances, we probably wouldn't reset the room again, and we'd just continue workshop from the dais.
Right.
And I can, I can see that being a real possibility.
Okay, sure.
Some meetings run very short, some meetings run longer.
Yeah, then, uh, in the thirty-minute break, we would tear this down, so that you could convene more formally for your meeting. So, that takes care of sort of the technical aspect of this, which is getting your rules squared away, and there'll be a, a full resolution that will have the whereas is about, explaining why we're doing this and all of that. The notion of what to do, what the coun- what the council will do during that break, understanding that you're coming at five, snack or something like that. Well, at the end of last year, we talked about that. I think the idea is that we will provide that somewhere appropriately in, in, in the building, not in here. Uh, unless I hear otherwise, that's what we were planning.
I've got two thoughts about that. One of the, uh, uh, concerns I've heard expressed about that is there might be, a perception that the council is going and having lunch away from, or having dinner away from the, the public, and then we might be continuing our discussion there. You know, there, there are safeguards and things like that to prevent that from happening, and it's not legal, obviously. But, you know, it's just a perception of it, so I'm, I'm not sure I'm, I think we have to just all be on our own for, uh, our sustenance during that half an hour period. That's my opinion. There's also the perception of additional cost paying for, you know, to the city.
I just know from experience, uh, for instance, C-Trans, they have employees going to the room with us. And so, we're basically gagged. You know, we're allowed to visit. We have dinner together, and we just talk about family, and we talk about the dogs and whatever else may be.
We can invite the press into the room as well.
The press, everyone.
Don can join us.
But the public is not allowed, and I'm not sure why. Does anybody know why they don't allow the, the public?
Well, it's not a meeting. If they, if they have those safeguards, it's not a meeting. They don't have to be allowed in, but still, I'm concerned a little bit about the perception.
I was hoping we'd go to Papa's, but that isn't possible.
Well, someone might carry it on.
Thirty minutes is, will go by quickly.
Thirty minutes is no time.
Yeah, you'd go to amnesia.
Amnesia would be good.
I know you would have amnesia when you get back.
That's true.
Couldn't work.
I moved, oh, sorry, I don't get to do it.
Forget to come back, you can be to amnesia.
City council meeting is now being held at amnesia.
How does, uh, other jurisdictions, how does Vancouver do it now?
They, they go into a, um, break room, um, conference room. They just bring, you know, um, you know, the Vancouver provides meals for their council members, and they just go into the break room, and staff joins them. I've never, and I've been in there a number of times, um, I've never seen them do anything that was questionable. Although individual council members might go into a corner and chat about something, unless it's two of them.
That was my experience.
The city provides the, the meal.
Right, they would support, you know, kind of rotate around and support, um, local restaurants in the downtown Vancouver area. That would bring a chance to show people, and so it would be always the council and the manager, uh, and the attorney. Uh, and then any staff person who had an item on the agenda were invited to come in. Not all did. Not all council members did. I don't know if there was any formality around excluding anyone from the room. Uh, I just, it's just, there's no exclusion of anyone. But as a matter of practice, in all my years there, going to those many dinners before council meetings, I don't recall ever, uh, a member of the public coming in to the room. There was an adjoining room that had vending machines, and public would hang, you know, there would be people in there. Uh, but sort of going in that next door, and sometimes it was just wide open, sometimes it was closed. But I never, ever observed a, anything that was a problem. You know, it was, it was a chance to do, have different types of conversations, but it was really just a question of convenience. Really, at the end of the day, it was a question of convenience, although they break for an hour. They still break for an hour. So, uh, it was a fairly, eh, but also keep in mind, Vancouver, every week meets in workshop from four to six. So, two hours of workshop, uh, doled into thirty-minute or sixty-minute things. You get the time that you get, and then the mayor, at the end of the time, that workshop is done.
Sometimes they don't have, they don't pull, take the full two hours. Sometimes they'll be at five instead of four.
Right, that's right, I remember that. Then the hour for dinner, and it's a, a real full meal. We're talking more of a light dinner, a snap-type scenario. Uh, this was a full, full dinner. And then they'd either have consent, well, that'd be the first and thirds, where they'd have a break. They go right to consent at six, um, and that's second and fourth. On first and third, though, that full hour, and then a full meeting. Sometimes it would go long. So, the council's there from four until ten, four until eleven, so a full meal.
Did the city provide the meal?
Yes.
I'm just opposed to our city providing meals for us. I think it's unnecessary.
I'm not opposed to throwing in some money to cover the costs, but it certainly would be helpful if something was provided and brought. If, if different restaurants come, come in and, and supply that, tell us what the meal costs. I don't, doesn't matter to me either way, but.
I don't mind if we pay for it, but I, I would, I object for the taxpayers paying for our meal.
I agree.
I agree.
But I just would love to see it prepared on our behalf, whether it's by a local restaurant. Hey, I pack my lunch so often, you should see the back of my car. I'm gonna have a refrigerator and a microwave eventually in there.
I think Camus does something similar as well. They break to, one of their conference rooms is back in the staff area. I know I asked him on the, whether, in the first, I was told in the first year, council members and staff paid for their meals. And I don't remember if it was something where they reimbursed the city, or it was held out from their monthly stipends, that type of stuff. And I was told, and I don't know why, that it became cumbersome. So, starting in the second year, the city went ahead and just, they just.
What city was that? I didn't hear.
Camus.
Camus.
I don't know what cumbersome means, if that's because of the way they were doing it, or.
Getting, getting a check or cash from eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve people every week just to make sure, or twice a month.
Seems like it'd be easier if just one person was in charge of, if we paid for it, which I'm fine with too, like, you know, all by dinner.
Rotate.
Like, March fifth or whatever it is. I don't know. Or just organize it, like Rose would say, I'm, I don't know, and I would order it in. No? I don't know.
My problem is I come right from, I will be coming almost from work.
Less people involved every week.
Coming, coming from work, I come from work. I don't know. It'd be hard to do.
We would be happy to, uh, pull it to, if, if the desire of the council is that, um, you know, personally covered by a council members for the council dinner, we would be happy to put it together with your funds. You know, so if you did a rotation, if you did a rotation, we could put it together.
Be happy to spend your money, is that what you just said?
Yeah, we would do it to, to mitigate against the lack of time for you to do.
It's ironic, it's what we already do anyway.
Right. We could.
Right, so you could tell me the dinner was a hundred dollars and I could come in and write the check for it. Or whatever it is.
I think Mayor Higgins told me once that they, it's ten dollars a person.
I'm not going.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we were.
But you would only do it once every.
What if you donate?
I'll bring my own food, thank you very much.
Well, I would too, but I'm saying you'd only do it once every. What, ten weeks or?
Thirteen weeks, something like that.
I can pack my, I pack lunches every day, so I can just add one more to the list, so.
Hey, peanut butter and jelly, the night I'm on.
Okay.
We have a microwave, we have a fridge. Um, we can just leave it.
We're down to brown bag in it now.
You guys are, you know, responsible for, for taking care of yourselves and uh, we can go with that. And then we can certainly, this isn't something that has to be in your rules, um, you can certainly come up with something different if that doesn't work out for you.
But bottom line, the city is not gonna be providing this.
Bringing in a hamburger at five.
That's the will of the council, it sounds like.
That's what I'm hearing.
City is not gonna be providing meals at city expense for us.
Right.
That's what I'm hearing. That's fine.
Thank you for your offer to coordinate all this.
Well, if it, if it does, if at some point it doesn't work out, or it's not as convenient, or it's not getting the job done, um. Just doing it on your own, I think it's, it's certainly appropriate for um, somebody on the staff, sorry Rose, um. To probably coordinate that because at different times, depending on what you've got in workshop and what we've got coming up in council, you've also got staff that may be in that same boat. The whole thing, so it's not just a question of necessarily the, the eight people at the table.
Right, we could do that essentially on our own and just, you know, get with Rose the, you know, the day of and say, are you guys placing an order? Can I join in? You know, that sort of thing. Pay for yourself. Or bring your own, however you wanna do it.
Well, again, C Tran, I think they have a, a caterer that does it every month, same caterer.
And C Tran pays for it? Well.
But I'm, it's not, I'm not.
They, they get more federal subsidies.
I'm not talking about the finance.
They pay for ninety-five percent of it. Charge it to the federal.
I'm not talking about the finance, I'm just talking about the convenience that somebody's designated to prepare something for us. It's not always good, so hopefully, Washougal has some better gear.
It comes through the bare box of the federal government or the other.
Some of them are terrible.
Oh, see, that's no good. You're gonna eat out, it's gonna be good.
We have a heart, brings soup and bread and salad.
I would love that.
See, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Support a local restaurant that is willing, maybe the heart doesn't have the staffing to do that, but.
Not open on Mondays.
I know, it's a bummer.
Amnesia's not open on Mondays, everybody.
I think we need to change our Mondays.
Isn't that in the code? I thought that was in the code.
I'm playing.
We need to meet a different night.
Yeah, we need to change the meeting like that.
Start over.
Start over. So starting in March, we're on our own and we'll make sure, uh, Rose, if you could, make sure in your reminder emails to council and staff that would be associated that. You've got that half hour period. Got it.
So we're bringing a hamburger, fries and a milkshake at five.
Stick it in the fridge.
And what am I gonna do then?
No, no.
You put it right here for the smell, to walk through the room.
Bring a salad and pizza, and we'll heat it up for you.
Okay, any other questions on, or comments on meeting times and dates? We're good? Opportunity again for anybody from the public that would like to uh, comment to council. Richard.
Uh, Richard Hamby, three seven zero one five Southeast Gibson Road, Washougal. Uh, I was expecting more conversation about it, but I. I came to speak in support of the development agreement for the Washou- uh, for the Steigerwald Commerce Center. I know that the board and the city staff has worked on this a lot and the agreements of this sort really are important for uh. For economic development and to put forth that kind of business friendly approach that, that I think that you're all after. So, um, I might speak more about that when you actually talk about it. On the subject of business friendly, in your first meeting in December, I was here and reminded you of a concern I'd had and brought to you a couple of times before that. About your city business licenses. Uh, there's a couple of things going on there. Uh, when you opted to. Have the state collect that money from you, uh, excuse me, I know there was a. Kinda unintended consequence of that nine dollar charge the state charges to collect the twenty-five dollars on your behalf. And then beyond that, and it doesn't apply to maybe a lot of, certainly doesn't apply to the businesses that have a physical presence in your city. But someone like me, who does occasional business in the city from outside the city limits, um, there was the unintended consequence. That if, as in the case for me, I had a city business license last year because I had some work in the city. This year, uh, actually last November, I get a, a notice from the Department of License. That I need to buy my next year's city business license. Well, at that time in November and at this time in February, I have no certainty that I will have business in the city of Washougal this year. In years past, and I've been doing business here for a long time, there's been many years where I have not had business in the city, but. When I do, I come down, hand the twenty-five dollars across the, the counter. I do business in, in unincorporated Clark County, Escamania County. Camus, the city of Vancouver and Washougal, and Washougal is the only one of all of those where I've ever had to purchase. A local business license to do business. City of Vancouver has a kind of complicated structure where. Once you reach a certain threshold, you have to purchase a business license, but I've done substantial amount of work in the city of Vancouver and never met their threshold. So the, the situation now is that for your twenty-five dollar business license, that no other jurisdiction seems to feel there's a need for. I have to pay the state nine dollars for you, for them to collect the money for you. And then at November of the previous year, if I don't decide that I'm gonna send my money to the state. If in the following year I end up having business, then I'm hit with a late fee. And I know twelve dollars and fifty cents of a late fee and nine dollars for the city, or for the state to collect the city's twenty-five dollars is. Is kind of small change, but is not business friendly. Uh, so I, I brought this up to you as a reminder at your first meeting in December. I know you had a lot of, lot of discussion that night about your budget issues and it was a very long meeting. I wasn't able to stay for the meeting. But at the end of that, you couldn't think of any other business you had to do, so you said, well, cancel meetings for the rest of the year. So I'm here to remind you again that this seems to be an unfriendly thing. There's no other jurisdiction that I have to pay. The business license fee at all, let alone another fee for the state to collect it for you. Let alone another fee that's a penalty because I did business last year in the city. So I, I, the two options that seem to be available to render, to remedy this, in my opinion. Is to change your city code so that businesses that don't have a physical presence in the city are not required to have a business license. That would be the same as all of the other jurisdictions, maybe say Vancouver, although like I say, they have a very high. Monetary threshold before you have to actually purchase that license. Or the other option would be to just go back to collecting those fees across your counter. I don't, although it seems to be unnecessary because nobody else needs to do it, I'm not complaining about having to do that. For thirty years, I've known that if I have business in the city, I'll come down and pay the twenty-five dollars. Seems unnecessary. But it's not as business unfriendly as being penalized because I didn't retroactively purchase a business license well ahead of any, no need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Martha.
Good evening. Um, this is nice. I remember when you used to do this, so you're back to doing this, so thank you. It's very friendly and very warm and. And my question to Jennifer is who's washing those tablecloths? Just kind of taking you back.
You still need your name.
My name, I will give you Martha Martin. I won't give you my address, however, and actually, people are not required to give their addresses because of confidentiality, so. If people say they won't, I hope it's okay with you. If they don't, you know, we don't want them showing up at our door, maybe, especially since we're being filmed and people get that information. Thank you.
Let's make sure and check on that, because I know it's in code and it's in, I believe, state law for public hearings, name and.
Public hearings, but not public comment.
Address with record, so.
Right, part of that is public comment's not required, nor is, I mean, it's a privilege, you let us come up here and speak, which was what I was gonna say. Was, thank you for allowing the public to come up and speak and I appreciate Councilman Bogers emphasis on that. There was a while back where we didn't have a brief period of time, but we didn't have any public comment. Then it came back to one, public comment period, and then it came back to two, and here we are.
And we have four.
I'm hearing that, and so fabulous, fabulous to involve the public as much as you possibly can. I really, really appreciate that. As a role model, thank you, because then others will follow. Um, in regards to change in government and predictability. Government never changes, right? Never. Are you always doing the same thing, always, every single time? I'm, I'm thinking there's elections, new people. New schedules, new formats. I just mentioned one with public comment. I know it's nice to say, gosh, we want. We want government to be predictable for people's schedules, um, and I appreciate Councilperson Lindsay's concern there. I think that you're trying to put together something that is people friendly and that is your, your own time as well is important. You need those. I'm looking at Connie Jo, you need those evenings off, bless your heart. And, and we would like, as citizens and myself as a commissioner, I would like to be able to go to Camus's meetings. And attend those and be informed and be able to participate. So this is a great opportunity when you change that, that's great. I appreciate it. That's something that you consider doing. So, good for you, um, keep up the good work and um, I feel very hopeful. Thank you.
Thanks, Martha. Anyone else that would like to comment to council? Uh, under Mayor's report, I've got uh, just a couple of quick items. One, uh, just to let you know, Amnesia did open, so they're up and operating. On the other side, Popos did close on Saturday, so. Dave, do you wanna mention, I know you sent out an email, but especially for the folks that are here from the public in regards to. The story in the paper yesterday and overtime and all that kind of good stuff and.
Sure.
The errors.
I don't know if you had a chance to see your, your email that I sent, it wasn't till five-ish.
Five thirty-two.
Five thirty-two.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it either.
And I don't know if you saw your Colombian today.
Didn't see that.
Front page story on, um, focused on overtime and as you can imagine, uh, public safety. The list was public safety and we all know and would have ex- expect that. The only thing that was problematic with that is that, um, there weren't app, it wasn't an apples to apples sort of a list. And what was informing the numbers for all of the communities wasn't the same. Not sure how that all happened, I was able to confirm that though. We received a disclosure request from the reporter, uh, asking for information. That included the cost of benefits that we pay to employee and the total compensation that we give that employee, so we reported that number. And then the overtime on top of that. Uh, when I looked at the list, it became evident, evident to me immediately. That that was not what was being reported for most, if not all, of the other communities. Okay, I was able to talk to two of those communities and confirm that indeed the numbers that were in that table in the paper did not include their benefits, so it just made the Washougal.
So it wasn't a total compensation package, it was just salary.
Salary.
And overtime.
Right, but what was requested of us was salaries and benefits, and so we complied with the request and provided the information accordingly. And I've reviewed the, the request and we did everything the reporter asked for, so for whatever reason, the other communities either didn't see that part and just gave the numbers or. Something happened in the reporting. Um, things like that happen. There's a lot of information from multiple communities, you're trying to keep track of it. You know, it's just, just to clarify that, um, the numbers that you see in that article for the Washougal personnel. Are inflated contextually because they include benefits as well. You back those out, the numbers come back down. So that they are right in the mix with the smaller cities.
Could we see what those look like or?
I could send you. I will email it to you. But the overtime is the overtime.
In fact, our firefighters are not making more than Camus's battalion chiefs.
Right.
And how much, a lot of our overtime pay was uh, pass-through money from the state, right?
Right, I could comment on that very briefly. I, you know, um, the reporter did mention that uh, some of the overtime was reimbursed by the state. But the way the article kind of came off was that, um. The wildland deployments are a cost to us. The wildland deployments are not a cost to us at all. It's completely expense neutral and we actually receive revenue for deploying our brush rig up. On behalf of the state deployments and um, we get reimbursed for mileage. So they don't cost us anything, once you net out the reimbursements that we receive.
What about the costs you really don't see? Like the cost of not having, say, a firefighter on the job.
That's factored in there. We, we assume if we.
They got the overtime.
Yeah, if we send Chris Castle up to Shelton and he's up there for two weeks, they pay his, his, what we would pay him for all those hours he's on. They also reimburse for, if we've gotta bring somebody in on overtime to cover his shift, they pay that overtime differential in there. Because it's a cost of him going up there. In addition, like Dave said, they cover uh, the cost of the expenses, they cover the, they actually rent our rigs from us, whatever we send up there for that period of time as well.
That doesn't mean that if you look at our overtime budget, you know, and only look at expense, whoa, like, one of our employees was deployed, I think for all of those fires. Lots and lots of overtime. And indeed, it hits as an expense. However, if you look at the revenue side, we, we get reimbursed and it comes back, so.
So they're paying for the firefighter plus their overtime working on the wildfire, plus the overtime of this extra staff that we have to have. To cover that as well?
It is expense neutral to us, absolutely hundred percent expense neutral. And um, in fact, uh, we are net positive because of the reimbursement for mileage on the brush rig. So it's um, and then it gives our firefighters that uh, choose to do that, uh, some experience in that type of firefighting in case we would need that. Like when we had our scenario at Steigerwald, I think that training, you know, it's sort of a training, so. It's, it is, it is not at all like the, sort of that normal mutual aid context that you hear about where. Something big happens in a community, we all go and help or, you know, all those types of things and we're all in a, in a, in a, an agreement that will, will do that. When the school, when Crestline uh, was lost recently in Vancouver, you know, you may have read that. They had ninety percent of their assets, Vancouver, uh, basically dealing with that situation or covering the community, so Portland was over. Covering and we do those types of things, but this is not like that. This is um, fully reimbursed and.
We don't get reimbursed for mutual aid agreement, mutual aid?
Uh, I'm not sure what the actual document that provides the mechanism for the state to reimburse us is. I haven't seen that.
No, but I mean, a mutual aid, in the Crestline situation, if we had people over there, we've been.
Typically, I don't believe we do. Um, I, I don't remember if.
In that situation, Camus sent a fire engineer with, it just happened to be two of our firefighters working on the Camus fire.
But I guess the question would be chief if, uh, say for example, the Stanbury Fire and that type of stuff where we had so many crews, so many personnel, so many everything from every agency that there was in the county. We didn't get bills from those agencies for their officers and firefighters and everything being here.
No, we, we didn't receive one bill. We even had a call out of tow truck and I didn't see a bill come through for that and that was the.
Okay. Typically, though, those are shorter in duration. At some point, I would think if, if, you know, we start to experience more of those. You know, things that last for a dozen, twenty-four, thirty-six hours. At some point, I would think if, you know, we start to experience more of those, you know, things that last for a dozen, twenty-four, thirty-six hours.
There should be some kind of escape clause if it gets really expensive. And I've never reviewed, I've never been involved in Vancouver's mutual aid agreements, but I've. You know, there might be, you know, if it gets to a situation where it's really a burden on us, I hope there's a kind of.
We can't have all of our crews there, you know, for a week.
Right, right.
You know, like Skamania Camp, uh, Skamania County, they pulled their crews back around midnight on that because they just had to get back, so.
So those were just, those were just some clarifications that I noticed immediately looking at the chart and then reading the article that I think could be misleading for perceptions. And we wanted to make sure that we at least informed you of those clarification.
I would like to know though, what the city pays out in overtime that is not reimbursed on some kind of deal like that from the state.
We have that.
And I'm sure you manage that and manage that very carefully too.
Every department manages it.
Right. I think the two areas where, the three areas where that's the highest would be, I mean, fire first because, and then police and then in public works. In fire, if somebody's off and we go below our, our coverage standard, you, we must have somebody come back. In police, it depends. Often we do, but not always. And then in public works, maybe or maybe not, you might be able to survive that day minus the two people who, who were ill.
It's, it's the weekend and the nighttime stuff where something bursts that.
Right.
The snow and ice and that type of thing.
Right. But one of the benefits of the trial consolidation for, for the system. You look at the whole system, there's less overtime in the system. And the CAMUS Washougal Fire Department is a direct result of the ability to backfill across the organizations. Overtime is a real challenge with fire departments everywhere. I think there is an inherent and ambient level of overtime and it's an unreasonable goal to say we will not have overtime in that facet of our public safety. Because of the cost of, because of the dynamic, you have to have somebody come back. And so in order to staff to a level where you've got enough extra folks around that you're paying all the time and you have more people hanging around just in case somebody gets sick. It's better, it's cheaper to have somebody come back on overtime. Where that spot is for each community varies depending on standards of coverage. But the chief has already made some changes over the last several years in some of the policies that were in place previously about eligibility and when we do it, how we call people back and some different things. And I think has done an admirable, an admirable job of trying to contain that particular cost driver. Sometimes you get anomalies where in that business, folks go down for a little while due to a very, an injury. It may have happened on the job or not. And we were hit with that over the last couple of years. CAMUS has been hit with that sort of abnormally high. Where multiple people at the same time, I believe when I first started, there was a time when. Four of the nine were gone on some sort of a medical scenario. That's almost half of your fire department, so you can imagine that.
Staff one shift.
We were doing more overtime then than we might otherwise be. But that's not normal, but it certainly happened at the time. We could share. In fact, I can't remember when chief is coming, but chief is coming to do something similar to what Jeanette did this evening. And so I think.
Twenty-fifth.
Think that'd be a great time for, so next month, great time for him to include that in the report.
Chief, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment that I believe the overtime that we received from the state was almost eighty thousand dollars for the amount of compensation that not only our paid, but our volunteers that went across the state. And they were gone upwards, two weeks at a time on multiple occasions. So there was a lot of hours.
That's all that I've got on Mayor's. Items from council?
Well, we're going to Olympia tomorrow, aren't we? For the AWC conference.
Some of us are. We'll see what we get told.
Yeah, I'll tell them how bad it is and what we're gonna lose.
What's the topic?
Legislative conference. There's multiple topics.
Will be updated on, things start moving quickly in the session. The session's, you know, off the ground. And so the AWC team that's up there advocating on behalf of cities will give us an update in real time. I think Wednesday morning. Is the governor coming to address the group?
At lunch.
Yeah, we, the governor's coming for the lunch, which will be good.
Is there something we should be following?
Yes. Well, the best thing you can do is the AWC emails that they send out and they've reformatted those, everything else. So it's very easy to see where things are and the things are the hot point. We could probably also though, get you the information, get you the link that goes back to what they call the bill room. So that you can track individual bills, even if it's something that AWC isn't looking at that'll give you.
I know how to track. I just was wondering, is there something we should be tracking?
I think if you go to the AWC site and to the legislative advocacy link, it'll give you the, really, it's the three or four issues that are the big issues for communities. And then also my presentation on a legislative update from the annual planning session kind of topically listed those. I didn't put a House bill or a Senate bill number. The key issues are the liquor excise tax and profit sharing revenue reduction after seventy years of sharing with that. So we can deal with the impacts in our community and public safety. That was taken, partially taken away, looking to restore that. Public Works trust fund, funding loans. The state's been a great partner over the years in investing in infrastructure in local communities and giving us one percent money. We have three projects that are approved for that. Former Governor Greg Waters proposed budget reduced the amount of Public Works trust fund money. And so two of our projects fell off of that or below the new line and only one of ours is in. One of those importantly is the wastewater treatment plant. The current rate reduction scenario that we were able to deliver assumed that we would, because we were on the approved list when we did that work for you. One percent money for the wastewater treatment plant. Now we're below the list, so now it's four percent money. That will make a small, but nonetheless, an impact on what we just accomplished. So our advocacy, of course, as an individual community is for those projects and we will certainly do that while we're up there. But also collectively as a city, community, family. That investment in infrastructure creates jobs and it invests in economic development. So that's a really, really big one for us.
Finding interest arbitration there.
Yeah.
Can you get another run out?
Right. This was also on my list that weekend. Trying to help us as communities be able to have a little more level playing field when it comes to some of the bargaining that we do. And, and then there's a host of, a lot of it, as you may recall, is sometimes reacting. Because dozens and dozens of bills just start coming out. I mean, it's amazing.
Until cutoff.
Until cutoff, right. And so the team up at AWC does just a tremendous job of keeping an eye on all of that. And rallying when we, you know, when something's going to happen that will be difficult for cities and.
Are you all, I'm assuming you all are on those emails to get the updates. I think we had one today, so if you're not on there, make sure and let us know. But they're pretty good about sending out additional ones when something is coming up for a vote and/or they need some additional testimony and/or something to get in touch with folks.
That is actually, that is how I stay up to date, is those emails that come out from the legislative staff. They're very good.
The one that really hasn't raised its head yet and may not yet for this session is if there's gonna be a significant move for another transportation funding program. Now, the governor, the former governor kind of put some things in there and said where she'd like to see them go, but I haven't really seen anything come forward yet that says this is how we're gonna craft it. This is what it's gonna look like. And in fact, this is where the money's gonna go, so. Always changing. Other items from council?
I went to my first Parks Board meeting this week. So it was great. So I have a couple of pictures I can pass around. This is potentially Hartwood Park. Which I think looks, or potential items for Hartwood Park. So they're working on possibly purchasing one of the little animals too. And then maybe looking for future grants to buy some of the playground equipment.
It's not a real one.
No. I was sort of sad that we couldn't afford all of it. Hathaway, new sign, Hathaway, if you haven't seen it, which is amazing. Yeah. And then, yeah, and then a couple of things. They ended their budget last year. They ended with a positive balance of forty-two seventy-one. Which they were wondering why that didn't go into reserve for parks and why it goes back into the general fund.
Forty-two dollars and seventy-one cents.
No, forty-two hundred.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we have a reserve fund for parks, do we?
Yeah, Parks is a generally funded program, so it just goes into the general fund reserve. We don't, we haven't set parks up as an enterprise fund where the money stays there.
Okay. They kind of wanted to keep it, so. And then, yeah, but I'll pass that information on to them. And then they have received two grants. One is from Department of Natural Resources and it's gonna do some tree trim, tree trimming in our city. And then the other one is from the Wazoo, Washington State University Master Gardeners. And it's gonna go to the community gardens in Hathaway. And then they had some, oh, there's piece of property on Thirty-seventh that's in, that is declared theirs and they have decided that it is surplus. And so they, we are gonna put it up for sale. So it's under some power lines that's up there on Thirty-seventh and I think the W, that's that. Then you would take a left on?
Yeah, to the north of there.
To the north of W, yeah. So I think it's on the right, so. And then I guess there was ten thousand dollars that went to the potential turf.
It hasn't gone anywhere yet.
Okay. They were not asked about that ten thousand dollars. So I was gonna come to you guys and they were just sort of wondering.
So after the high school?
They just didn't have an opinion in that whole, whole decision, so. They were asking if we had had any, you know, conversations about it and I.
We did and Jennifer.
I know we did, but.
And Jennifer explained that it was, could be used that way, that the money could be used. And I think you explained it also. And I had explained it.
At one of the park meetings.
At the park board.
Yeah.
We had those conversations in council workshops on a couple of occasions. The mayor communicated by email to park board, Parks Board members about it. That doesn't mean that.
Or maybe they just thought more about it and now they're like.
Agree with that, you know.
Yeah, wanting to spend it in different ways. But, yeah, but no, it was a great meeting and it was fun.
Did they bring up the property on K Street at all? Along the river?
Yes. And there was one gal that wasn't at the meeting. I can't remember her name, but I guess she has quite the emotional attachment to that piece. And so we tabled it to March, so. But some of the, we looked at the map and some of the members did not know that that piece of property didn't have waterfront. So it's just this little triangle down there on K. And so I was sort of in, in favor of, of selling it. Just, you know, declaring it surplus as well, so. Cause I think it appraised at like a hundred or a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Which seemed.
Yeah, there was.
Or, well, maybe it was more.
No, a hundred and that one was fifty up there.
Yeah.
Gave out a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand between the two of them.
And the one, the one on Thirty-seventh. I can't remember which bank that, but she said had given twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of that property.
Never purchased it. We were given that.
Oh, this one, this property you were given?
I remember.
Went off Thirty-seventh.
I can't remember exactly which property and exactly the context, but I do remember an issue around a property where there was a donation. And then it was maybe not gonna be necessary for us to keep it and how you do that, but I don't know if it's.
Few donations, because there was another piece of property across the street that actually tied into our trail system that made sense. This one didn't, but it was kind of a loss leader.
Okay.
Given that one, you gotta take this one too, because we don't wanna mow it anymore.
Right. Yeah. So they, they kind of talked about, you know, if that is true about that property and maybe it's not. You know, I just was in favor of, of offering it back to the bank or just, you know, or maybe trying to get them to be in favor of us putting their names somewhere else in the city. But I was, I thought that was the right thing to do was, if, if it's true, so.
Did you say that we're not buying all of these items? Are there certain ones that were already, that weren't chosen?
I think we're looking at the pig.
Or what?
Just one animal there.
Should be a horse up there. It used to be a horse farm.
Yeah, yeah. And moms. Or grandmas. It's very, very cute.
It's really cute stuff.
Very cute.
Dave?
Public Safety Committee meetings are usually the third Monday of the month at noon and this month, we're not gonna have one.
There are predictability again.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But then the following month, we're gonna take a tour.
Station forty-two?
We're gonna look at the emergency operations center that CAMUS Washougal will share in the event of a disaster. We're looking at disaster preparedness. And this weekend, I spent Saturday down in, in Clackamas at Camp Withicum.
We know Withicum.
The forty-fifth, Forty-first Reserve Division. Taking ICS four hundred, which is the Incident Control System. The way it operates from the national level all the way down to the local level. And the common terminology and organization and things like that. And we've checked on our plans here as a committee and the plans are almost right down the line with doctrine. There were a couple of positions that weren't named properly. But the emergency planning that the administration and staff have done is excellent. And we're gonna look at the communications aspect of it next month. And we'll invite folks to go with us at that time. We'll announce it ahead of time.
Don't expect great things when you walk in that conference room, because it's really just a training conference room unless we have something happen. Then there's all kinds of stuff that moves in there, so.
And that's the question. How do we set up communications? Cause that's the communications hub.
Yep. Well, the Forty-first Division was also the Sunset Division.
Yes.
Which is the Sunset Highway.
That elements of that division went ashore at Lady in the Philippines in nineteen forty-five and my father went with them.
Any other items from council?
Just a comment that we're talking about the three town halls, just the fact that we also have another Saturday meeting and that's the January, January retreat. Just for the record, I thought it'd be interesting to say that.
It's not in code though.
Yeah, it's not, not in the rules.
Not in the rules, huh? Why didn't you show up?
Rose brought food and, Rose brought food and we were there.
It was a good meeting. So just, just statement.
We'll always try and publicize every chance that we get that folks from the community have the opportunities to engage with us.
Many more now.
Any other items?
I, I just, when you get the copy of this, I think it's important you all read it. It's gonna be a big impact on our city. It's, it's, it's important. I mean, this is an issue we're gonna be dealing with and it's gonna be on down the line, more and more issues around this.
What's the topic again on that?
Five-O-Two, the marijuana, recreational marijuana initiative.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
It's not gonna go away and I think the better informed we are. Everybody's looking at our state and what the state does is gonna be kind of the blueprint for all the other states that begin to start legalizing marijuana, so.
Colorado too.
It's a, it's a big, it's a big deal.
As long as everybody's talking about their schedule, just a quick update, Public Works meeting coming up this Wednesday, if it's still on at one o'clock. Also, school board meeting tomorrow night. They'll be discuss, it's at Excelsior High School. They move it around and have linkage meetings with the different schools, you know, throughout the year. So I guess. So I guess the major topic for their work session is going to be their levy, levy renewal, which will be coming up pretty soon, so. And they're bringing in some, I guess, some advisors from other school districts. CAMUS School District Director of Business Services, Donna Greger's going to come and speak about that. And they're bringing in some fiscal officers from ESD one twelve as well to talk about that. So, that's all.
Tomorrow night, C-Trans meeting will be discussed. Route forty-one will be discussed as a public hearing. If anybody cares to give input, you can do it in person or online.
Any last items?
Amnesia's great. One more flag for Amnesia. You would have thought you were in.
All about it.
I want you to bring back your resolution, Dave, on that.
There was tons and tons of people, including Mr. Brandt.
That was Friday. I was very busy opening.
Okay, final note for next week. Our meeting is not on Monday, it's on Tuesday.
Sorry, Sean, I didn't catch that.
Uh, next week's meeting's on Tuesday, not on Monday.
Okay.
For the holiday.
I'm gone for the next two days.
Okay. Duly noted.
They had a rotation. They're going to.
With that, we're adjourned.
David Scott, are you going to pass back my pretty pictures?
With your doodles on them?
I know, right? On my triangles. What does that mean?
I don't know. I could bring it home and have it analyzed.
I know, right?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I know. They're so funny.